I saw the pulse point come up higher than the alcohol. There's a, there's one in Lincoln City, this one that was there.
Were you?
Yeah, I've never heard of doing a street there.
Oh.
Apparently, oh, hydrants on that street are.
Yeah, they had a problem with all those.
Yeah.
Fortunately, it wasn't too bad.
All right, it is 6:00 PM. Do we want to wait for a moment, see if Creed's gonna show up?
Yeah, I think I'll see if Jenny can send him a message.
Okay. So we're gonna hold off for a moment until hopefully our city planner gets online. He's supposed to be attending the Zoom, so.
See, the flags are up.
See the, oh, the little crosswalk flags? It's a good, it's a good interview.
They're not helping. People still aren't stopping. Well, the problem was, is that, is you were going Marlin 101 the other day. There was a guy, second to the last, street came down. You stand there and hold a flag, you know? Hadn't been moving, wasn't gonna cross, just holding the flag. So people started ignoring me. Sure. Stopping for the next crosswalk up, then people acted in it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So like, well. First people that don't quite get it yet, but, I don't know, anyways. Two rules for pedestrians. Look like you want to cross it. Get the heck out across the road, man. I saw a guy, I don't know, this evening, grabbed three, three flags and take it across. And he was.
Was he restocking?
He was restocking the other side.
At one point, we were told we couldn't do that straight.
I thought it was a cross.
All right. Good evening, Creed. Are you able to hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. You guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. A little bit on the outside, though.
Great. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call this, what's the date? The September 10th, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting to Order, so you keep obeying. Carla, when you're able, would you please call and roll and establish form?
Watkins.
Here.
Morland. Here. Whitmire.
Here.
Sherman.
Here.
Brady.
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements? Don't believe we do. We do have a set of minutes. Has everybody had a chance to read this? This is from the May 14th. It was the Joint Work Session, Planning Commission, City Council. This is our training session for where we had the DLCD gentleman come down and talk to us. Everybody had a chance to review those minutes?
It looks fine to me.
Yeah, I didn't see any issue.
Yes.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Motion to approve the minutes.
My first?
Your first.
Your first, okay. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the May 14th Joint Work Session Meeting Minutes as presented. Any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, Carla, please take the roll.
Watkins.
Approve.
Morland.
Here.
Whitmire.
Here.
Sherman.
Hi.
Brady.
Yes.
I was gonna ask.
Okay, thank you. All right, on to some business. We've got one public hearing on the agenda tonight. Case file number 1-CU-PC-25 regarding. Regarding a conditional use for a mobile coffee concession trailer up at the north end of town. And before we do that, I've got my official spiel to read for the record on a quasi judicial public hearing. The following statement will apply to all public hearings heard at tonight's meeting. The testimony and evidence must be directed toward the code section citations and criteria described in the Depot Bay staff report or other criteria included by the party believes to apply to the subject request. The failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the state land use order appeals on that issue. Application materials and other evidence relied upon by the applicant have been provided to the city and have been made available to the public. The procedures for the public hearing will be as follows. A, there will be a staff report. B, the applicant will present testimony. C, there will be testimony from those in favor of the application. D, there will be testimony from those in opposition to the application. E, there will be rebuttal from the applicant. F, I will then ask if there is anyone who requests that the record remain open for final additional written testimony. G, if none, the public hearing will be closed. And finally, the commission will deliberate and make a decision. There will be no further input from the public during deliberations. Are there any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, or bias of commissioners regarding the hearing before us? Speak now or verbally repeat.
No.
Sounds like a rousing no. Is there any opposition to any member on the commission hearing this case by commissioners or the public? Anybody have any issues? Hearing none? Creed, if you are ready, I think we're ready to receive a report or a staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. So, the applicant requests conditional use permit to allow a mobile coffee vending unit located in the parking lot of Worldmark Depot Bay Time Share Facilities. The coffee vending unit is intended to serve only guests, patrons, and employees of Worldmark. There are no signs proposed. Business will not be solicited from highway travelers or non-patrons of Worldmark or visitors of Worldmark. And no drive up or through service, drive-through services proposed or will be provided. Relevant facts, including property location and other characteristics, are provided in the staff report. I won't belabor them. With regard to existing structures on, onsite, there are 11 three-story buildings on the property containing 114 two- and three-bedroom units, suites. There are also an activity area, pools, hot tubs, a fitness center, and similar amenities onsite. The property is in the coastal shorelands boundary overlay zone. However, placement of a mobile vending unit as proposed does not require permitting under the coastal shorelands overlay zone code. The application was duly noticed and comments were received from ODOT, the Depot Bay Fire District, and Lincoln County Building Department. Those comments are attached to the staff report and were incorporated into the recommended conditions of approval as warranted. Figure three provides a site plan and shows the proposed location of the trailer. And a photo of it, it's a new, brand-new model, custom-made apparently. Moving on to summary and staff analysis. The staff report notes that the vending, mobile vending stand is conditionally permitted, may be conditionally permitted in the C1 zone. Because there is no structural development proposed, including expansion of any building's footprint or increase in its height, and no ground disturbing activities are proposed, the development and design standards of the commercial zone, C1 zone, are not applicable. The proposal is consistent with Section 152.061, general provisions regarding accessory uses, fences, retaining walls, hedges, and decks. The staff report goes into some detail to iterate the details of that, of the conformance with, with that section. Section 152 dot 136 provides standards governing conditional uses. And the applicant responded to each of those. And the, his response is included in the staff report. Staff concurs that the site is suitable for the proposed use as it's not located in an area identified as bearing severe slopes or affected natural resources and would not impede the flow of vehicles onsite. The proposed location would not reduce the number of parking spaces below that which is required by the code. My, my friend is tattling on me. I don't know if you can hear that noise in the background.
No, I'm good.
You don't hear a squeak in the back, okay, good. I'm, I'm trying to keep a secret around here till Friday, so. I don't want to give it away. Business hours will initially be limited to daylight hours. At least 30 minutes after sunrise and ultimately may be extended to up to 30 minutes after sunset per the zoning ordinance. Only walk-up business will be accepted, and as I mentioned, no drive-through or drive-up service. The applicant proposes to connect to existing electrical and public water facilities currently serving Worldmark. This increase in water usage would require a modified water service permit and correlating increased system development charges and user fees. The applicant seeks a waiver of the requirement to connect to public sanitary sewer. Under the authority granted to the planning commission through the conditional use procedures, the applicant proposes to dispose of gray water with twice daily pumping of a 45-gallon tank and shipping off-site. And black water by weekly towing the trailer to an approved disposal location to empty that 45-gallon holding tank. This is not exactly consistent with Section 52.03 sub, sub D1B, as detailed in the staff report. However, if the commission finds that the intent of the code to protect the public from unsafe or unhelpful conditions can be met by adopting specific conditions of approval while permitting the trailer to be towed off-site weekly to an approved disposal site, requirement for connection to public sewer may be conditionally waived by the commission. The city's Public Works Director indicated no preference concerning the question of connecting to the system. Alternatively, the commission may opt to allow a trial period, for example, 30 to 60 days, deferring connection for a period to permit the applicant to test the feasibility and success of the mobile unit onsite and require the applicant to connect to city sewer at a later date. Another final alternative is to require connection prior to issuance of a, a business license. Existing conditions described in the staff report establish the use's compatibility with existing and permitted uses in the vicinity. Notably, no exterior lighting is proposed. And existing landscaping screens and buffers the unit from on- and off-site uses and the highway right-of-way. Section 152 dot 136J provides additional standards governing conditional use for, specifically for mobile vending stands. And the proposal is consistent with those. And I'll just mention that the, a couple of noteworthy facts that are pertinent there. The applicant has obtained a Class 3 called Mobile Self-contained Vending License from the Lincoln County Environmental Health. And a copy that was attached to this report. No other state or county permits are required. Building Department confirmed that for their part. Now, subsection J, again, a reminder, this is special standards specific to mobile vending stands. Sub 9, and I'm on page 10? Excuse me, I'm on page 13 right now. Stipulates the mobile vending stand shall be removed from its place of operation within one hour after sunset to a private storage place out of view. A mobile vending stand shall not be placed upon any property for the operation of business before sunrise. So the applicant seeks a modification in the code requirement for daily removal of the mobile vending unit. The planning commission has allowed it to waive this requirement if it finds the intent of the standard may be met through imposition of one or more conditions of approval. The requirement appears intended to protect neighbors and highway travelers from adverse visual impacts from the unit remaining onsite after business hours. Staff's recommendation is that the commission waive the requirement for daily removal of the unit based on its proposed location already constituting a private storage place out of view as required by the code from the public, excuse me. Only patrons and, excuse me, only patrons and employees of Worldmark would have clear visibility of the unit. And even that is significantly buffered by existing grass and landscape specimens. Based on the unique circumstances of the subject property and proposal, staff recommends the intent of the code may be met by adopting a condition of approval that simply requires the unit to be placed as depicted on the approved site plan. The trailer would eliminate approximately four existing parking spaces. However, that would leave a surplus of approximately 190 spaces over what the code requires. So there are somewhere in the order of 400 parking spaces onsite. This proposal does not require a building permit. It doesn't enlarge or extend any existing structures or include any ground disturbing activities. And as such, planning commission review of a coastal shorelands overlay zone development permit is not required. Under the conclusion and recommendation conditions, or excuse me, and recommended conditions of approval, staff recommends finding that the record contains substantial and sufficient evidence to establish the application is consistent with the applicable decision criteria. Alternatively, if the planning commission finds the request failed to satisfy those, it can move to deny the request articulating the basic conclusions and rationale for the decision and directing staff to prepare corresponding findings for adoption. In the event of approval, staff recommends adopting a number of conditions of approval. I won't hit on all those. Number eight, though, notes that the applicant proposes to limit operations to daylight hours. However, the code does permit extending those up to 30 minutes after sunset. And if the applicant ever opts to change operating characteristics, an exterior lighting plan must be prior approved by the city planner. And finally, condition number 10 is reserved in order to insert the specific details of the planning commission's decision regarding connection or not to the sanitary sewer. And that concludes my presentation, thank you for the patience.
Thank you Creed. Does any, any commissioners have any questions for the city planner specifically regarding the report?
Thank you.
Go for it. I see it, Chris. Ruth, Ruth called first.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Ruth.
Okay, as far as the location, I'm a little confused because it first says that it would be a location where it's screened with vegetation, but then it talks about being in a different location because of electric power.
The original site plan had it in a slightly different location, but my comments in the staff report about it being visually buffered and screened pertain to the location that you see on the site plan in the staff report, and that was the final proposal. And there are pretty significant plantings out in the highway frontage aligning with that location.
And then I wonder, the, the language in here about moving a, a business like this offsite kind of presumes that it's not under all property? Is that right? Like, if you have to move it daily, does that presume it's on public property or some other property?
I mean, mobile vending units are only allowed on public property under certain rare circumstances with a specific event. I think that's condoned by the city. But it, you know, I can't speak to what the rationale was. It may very well have been part of the consideration that it was. Yeah, I, I can't, I can't answer that, I'm sorry.
Okay. And then what would, what would a hookup for the, is it black water? What would that entail? I mean, is it just a piece of pipe laying on the ground or?
That's the dirty water used to tie that sewer potentially, or it, or it.
If, if they were required to connect a public sanitary sewer, there'd be a, a separate service lateral run to this trailer, probably off their existing private line. And it would be underground, it wouldn't be on top of the ground.
Okay.
But it would be a bit of an expense.
Just a bit.
Well, I find it a little bit contradictory in my mind that they, that they don't want to move it, but then they want, they want to move it to empty it periodically, so it's like.
Well, the applicant can address that, but they don't want to have to move it daily on the night, on the nightly. And it only requires moving about once a week to remove the black water. So that's what they're requesting. But I think if you have questions, more questions like that, they might be best directed to the applicant after they have a chance to present if they so choose.
And I have one more question that I think is a safe question, but maybe not.
Okay, they're all, they're all safe.
So does the city have any problems with the public that coming and walking up and using this service? I mean, is that gonna be, are they required to turn people away or screen them or is?
No, I don't know, the city, the city would never know if that was occurring, really. And that's, it was on a huge, massive scale, and it won't be because there's not a lot of pedestrian tourist traffic at that far end of town and, by my observation. But no, I mean, nobody's gonna get in trouble if somebody wanders in and buys a coffee. It's just, that's not what they're intending, they're not advertising for it, they're not soliciting it.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Okay, Chris, you're up.
Thank you. I had a question, it's kind of a general question because I've seen other food trucks around, whether they're in Lincoln City or Newport. And so I'm wondering if there's a standard, what, if they're asking those food trucks, did they have to hook up to city services or was there a grace period for a year? You know, what, what has been the standard? And then also, you know, what is the oversight that well, that Worldmark has too? Because I'm sure there are probably some, you know, oversight that they have aside from what we, you know, as a planning commission would have. And is this gonna be, it doesn't have to be renewed every year then?
Okay. That's, that's, that's gonna be up to the planning commission if they opt to approve this, they can just approve it across the board for perpetuity, or they can ask to take a look at it on an annual or two-year basis. And I don't know if I might have neglected to make, get a condition to that effect in, into the draft. But I intended to, and I talked about it in the, let me see here, oh, yeah, condition number one says this conditional use permit rule shall expire if the applicant's vending unit is not established and a city business license issued within one year. of the effective date of this decision. And now, and this is just to rec, this is just a recommendation or a consideration. The planning commission will reevaluate the conditional use for any adverse impacts and expiration of the initial one-year period and biannally after that.
Okay.
A public hearing is not required for this review unless desired by the planning commission chair. So that's a suggestion that I made where you could take a look at it in a year and then every couple of years after that. Your other question. I don't, I didn't do research in terms of contacting other jurisdictions and finding out what they're requiring. I looked at Newport one time out of curiosity, and I noted that they do require connection to sanitary sewer in Newport. But I don't know if the smaller jurisdictions do. And I don't believe even the city Corvallis does, but I can't say for sure.
Okay.
I don't know what, I, if they're the standard, I mean, I'm sure it varies quite a bit among jurisdictions is what I, what I think. And then Worldmark, you know, they're, you know, protect their investment and their property, so they're the property owners and then kick those guys out or require any changes in operating characteristics that they feel they need to. So they have a lot of oversight as the property owners. Does that answer that part of the question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Any other, Scott, you got any questions on the staff report, Creed? The sub nine on the conditions.
I'm sorry, is this Scott?
Yeah, this is Scott, yeah.
Okay, hi, hi, Scott.
The one about operating 30 minutes before, after sunset or sunrise or after sunrise and before sunset. The, this is a copy card, and January, the day and sunrise and sunset are nowhere near each other. Has anybody given any consideration to what that means? And, and I, I can understand the intent of this rule, but I'm not sure the intent is here, is necessary. There may be some other adjustment we can make or should make or need to make, or I don't know. Has anybody asked about that? What was the conversation?
Well, well, firstly, the applicant's proposal is to operate during daylight hours. And then secondly, that language is straight out of the conditional use standards for mobile vending units. And yes, I mean, the planning commission could modify those. But the point of, of that is that no exterior lighting is required if you're falling within this presumption is that you don't need exterior lighting if you're going to follow those parameters, and that's less impacting on everyone. And so that's the source of it. And like I said, the applicant hasn't requested any kind of a deviation to that.
I don't know. I guess that's all I had. Okay. I think all my questions are just going to be for the applicant. So last call for any staff report questions. Chris, you all good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, in that case, we will move on if the applicant's present and you'd like to speak on your application, step right up. Is that, is that you?
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, please step up and just fill in your name and city for the record. I think you got a moment.
My name's Jerome Black. My name's Jerome Black from Pioneer Joe Coffee Company. My disposal is talker if you can ask questions.
We, we might ask some questions of you when, when you're done, but if you have anything to speak on, on, on the application or anything that the city staff report didn't cover, any other stuff you want to add in.
I don't think there's anything new. It's, we were, Worldmark invited it. We've done some stuff with providing gift cards for staff and stuff with them in the past, and they invited us to come down and do this. And so we want to explore the opportunity. We just want to try it out for a while, see if it works. We have no idea if it's going to be justified payroll and, and what, every book we want to give a shot. So yeah, any questions you have on that?
Sure. Anybody got any questions for the applicant?
So what about the, you don't have lighting, you don't have lighting on the vehicles, so you don't?
There's no exterior lighting as, or there's some interior lighting and there's so there, I don't know that, you know, if it, it's dark at 7:00 a.m. We're typically in our craft shops open from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And I guess in the process, I was thinking a bit more in staying open at night. We're not going to be open at night, but if it was dark in the morning, it really wouldn't affect our operation, but if, if we wanted to add lights, as I understood it, then, then that would be an issue, but we wouldn't need to add any light. But if, if the instance says that we can't open until the sun rises, then that's fine.
So what about this pulling the trailer out to empty the gray water or pump, pump up the gray water onsite, right? How, how would that occur?
So the trailer was custom built specifically to sell coffee, and it has 45 gallon dairy water, 45 gallon black water, 45, 50 gallons. I, on this logic, I always get these mixed up. There's three tanks, freshwater, gray water, black water. We did a small event just to get an idea on what that would take, and we ran a day and a half without doing it, without filling any of the tanks. So we don't anticipate it to be as often disappeared, but it's set up just like an RV. So anything an RV can do, it can do. I don't, it doesn't need any hookups. I can pull in water and stuff and do it. Black water, gray water's not gross. It's, it's going to maybe be a little bit of milk and coffee and water, maybe some dish soap. So we, we thought if it does become an issue, we need to pump it out frequently. That's no problem. I throw a tank in the back of my truck. I can pump it out. The black water is gross. I wouldn't want to do that in the back of my truck, so I would tow it over to an RV dump station and dump it. And there's several on the coast. I don't know which ones are the closest, but and so that's different. It's not a big deal if I have to, I mean, there should be one person in the trailer who knows, maybe four hours a day. Could be three days a week, I don't know. But worst case scenario, it would be once a week, like it's getting heavy, heavy use. So I lived in an RV for about eight months and a family of four. We only dumped it once a week. And that's with showers and everything. So but to pull it out, like if we're going to pull it out, we'll store it somewhere, that would require hauling it all the way back from the city and or renting something that would kind of make it.
But it's, it's feasible to haul it out and dump the black water periodically. Is this designed for that?
Yeah.
I got a question for you. The, the, thank you on the info there on the sanitary connections. That was some of my, my question, but actually, two questions for you. First one's kind of an easy one. As far as, it may be in the staff report, I missed it, but as far as power requirements, it looks like on the picture, you're pretty close to one of the existing like utility building for something for that Worldmark asked. Are they going to provide like a power source for you or you're not going to run out of generator?
No, there's a, there's a plug in. A question somebody asked for a while, whatever cities require, Lincoln City doesn't require hookups, but they don't, do require it. They can't have a generator.
Okay.
And so, but yeah, we do have a plug in place, and we do have a source for fresh water, and it's just using a food grade hose. And so we can fill the fresh water all the time and, and have power all the time. So it's just a matter of how to get through to the gray water. It's just a copy card. So and all the dishes are going to be paper cups that are leaving and ended up in the trash can, not didn't wash. Those are some utensils that get cleaned. So there's just not going to be that much water that makes it. Most of it's going to leave in your cup.
So the other part of that is, is we've got the understanding that the, the intent is kind of to do a trial run, that to see how it pans out and if it's going to be feasible long term. Given that the, the city planner in his staff report left us a little bit of leeway on making a decision regarding sanitary connections, whether, whether we want to, you know, push a permanent connection or what. Given that it's intended to start off as a, as is feasible or not, being trial run for a while. Personally, I'm okay with, with the proposal as is of, you know, pumping out the gray water and disposing of the black water. But if, if a, you know, if it does work out and it's a spectacular success, I'm curious that, you know, after some period of time, might start looking, might start being preferable to have that permanent connection, which is, you know, significant project, of course, but, and I think that would also require, I think the sewer public works would probably make you have like a grease trap and everything. I mean, you're not producing food at all.
No, we don't have any cooking devices. We're just making coffee and, you know, we'll probably have muffins in our, in our wrapper.
Okay. So I guess my question for you is, you know, at some point down the road, if this is successful and you plan on sticking it out there, would it, would it be, would you be open to permanent connection and?
Absolutely. Yeah, I don't mind going under and towing it out once a week for a couple of months. I don't want to do it forever.
Yeah, okay.
We would, we would want permanent hookups if it works.
Okay, okay, that's good to hear. So at some point down the road, if you're, if you're, you know, if we're willing to reassess and see where we're at, you know, in a few months or a year or something, and, and looking in at the sanitary connections, that would be, if you're not able to that, I think that would be.
That would be my preference.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Anything else? Scott? Chris?
I'm fine. Thank you.
Well, I don't know. Here's a question for you guys, but I probably should ask this for Creed. I think this report kind of addresses all potential issues, but there's that part, I just keep going back to that part where it says in there that we, that you're limited to patrons and residents of the. Why is that in there if it's not going to be an issue?
We're not, I, as I understood it, we're not limited to that. We're just not asking to, it's not a public issue. We're not asking to signage and attract people to our places.
But is there a concern that, because, because if this is successful, I could see myself driving over to a convenience spot in Worldmark and patroning, you know, using, using your services, which will be good for for business, of course, but I don't know if there's, if we need allocations for that or I don't think the city on their side had any creepy curriculum around, but I don't think there's any.
Yeah, I'll, I'll chime in on that. There's nothing in the conditions of approval that stipulate, you know, who the customer base can be. So.
Yeah.
The only objection, Worldmark might have objection to public watering of the property.
Yeah.
But they have, they have that public path there. That public goes there, walks by there and boy, it's made.
Everybody else's property too, so.
Yeah.
Well, you do have an excess amount of park.
Are they getting a commission?
And for what it's worth, the health department gave us full approval to operate without hookups anywhere in the state. So hookups just become a locale issue.
Well, yeah. And it's not a state, you're saying that's not a state requirement?
No, sanitary, the trailer sanitary operate. In fact, we had expected it's, it's the best trailer probably 10 times that, that they've approved of.
But yeah, my, my understanding is that, yeah, the sanitary hookup is just jurisdictional. So, you know, like, like, for you saying, you know, Newport has different rules in, like, Lincoln City, and I don't even know what rules we got per state or what we're looking at, but.
And Lincoln County doesn't care, right?
The main reason for local rules, pipes on the street.
You know, the environmental health, the environmental health division recommends connection, but they don't require, they don't have any authority to, to require that. It's up to individual jurisdictions.
I may have one more question for Creed. So I think in the, in the contingency, it said that fire marshal has to do their stamp of approval, approval. Is that prior to going in service? Because typically I see that happening after you're up and running. So is that, is that how we set it up here?
The way the condition is written is the fire marshal needs to take a look before a building or before a business license is issued. But of course, the, the fire district will have the authority to drop by and check on it during operation at any time.
Also, just so you know, I called the fire department and asked them, and the lady took the note, but since we didn't have any cooking devices, and she didn't think they would have anything to say about, she said she had the fire marshal calling back, and that was days ago, and I haven't heard it.
Well, I have, I have a letter. It's attached to the staff report, and he says he wants the fire marshal and the local fire district both to sign off on it before it opens for business.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Chris, you still good? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I think, is there, we can move on to, I don't think there's anybody else here unless, unless you wish to speak in favor of the application or opposed.
I can't hear to object.
Wait for your moment. So that's a little bit.
Okay, I don't see anybody on Zoom that would be up for testimony, so no rebuttal either. Okay. Well, thank you for your statements. That's the whole, the order of procedure. Okay, no further testimony from anybody. Is there anyone who asked that the record remain open for final additional written testimony? I'm going to presume not. Last call for any testimony before we close the public hearing. You guys both, both good to go? Okay. All right, we will close the public hearing and go into commission deliberations. There will be no further input from the public during deliberations. If we do have a question we need, we can reconvene our, our public hearing real quick and, and do it. That way we have to go through that formal process, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, did we miss the announcement regarding the applicant waiving seven days to submit additional testimony or something? Did we miss an announcement in there somewhere?
Uh, I don't, you did mention something during your staff report, but yeah, that was probably a good time before, let me.
It should be in the script.
Oh, he mentioned that part. He said he didn't think there's anybody out there that needed it.
The, the, this more written testimony?
Uh, the applicant has the right to request, I don't know.
That the record remain open?
I guess so. Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, I did, I did ask that.
Okay, sorry. Seems like there's a couple, couple similar announcements that, anyway, sorry to interrupt.
Okay, no problem. All right. Okay, commission deliberations. Anybody got any thoughts?
I like the idea. Oh.
Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, I really like this idea. I think, you know, it's a, a business opportunity that may work, may not work, but they're going to try it. I'd like to give away for the hookup at least for a year, you know, and then have them come back. Have it be, I mean, this would be my recommendation, is have it a one-year conditional use and then see if they, if they're doing fantastic and it seems like it's time to hook up for, to the city sewer, then that would be, you know, something for us to address and, you know, kind of see how it goes for them this year. Because however, gosh, they're going to be starting, what, November or, you know, I don't know how it will really be for them, you know, financially too.
I completely agree. Yeah, I think that revisiting this in, in like a year's time, I think the staff report kind of throws some conditions in there kind of along those lines.
I take a different, different position on that. I think, given the fact that there's only going to be one employee part-time, that it's really not, it's really going to be up to them whether they want a hookup or not, because we'll never know that there's a toilet in the place unless it spills, in which case we talk about it. But I don't see any reason that we would look back later and see how it's working because it's not really our problem. The purpose of the rule is to keep. The purpose of the rule is to keep pipes from the storm sewer.
Yeah.
It's a dumb stuff, dumb and rotten sewer in the storm sewer and they're not doing that. They're heaping it in the tank and they're running their tank out. They might, they might only need to do it every two weeks or so. So if it's, if it's not, if it's an issue for them, they'll come back and they have to be hooked up. If it's not an issue, I don't know why we need to push it because who won't know that it's not happening?
That was the same comment I was going to make, that as long as they're properly disposing, I mean, we won't, no, it doesn't matter. They're properly disposing, however, they end up doing that. And then at their point, they feel like this is too much of a burden for them, then they can hook up.
Right.
But if they're properly disposing, they're properly disposing.
Now, as far as the lighting and the hour of the operation go, in January and February, the sunrise is probably eight thirty, closer to nine o'clock. And that's probably going to impact our operation more than anything. So, you know, I could see a couple of rows of string lights maybe needed in the mornings. But as long as this, if we put, if we put in restrictions, all will be, not before seven. You know, or seven thirty even, or whatever the sometime is, because a coffee shop would be open when people need coffee.
The only thing I concern, I have no dispute with, with, you know, making the sanitary connection, you know, their option completely, except that and I'm just thinking if any other, if anybody comes along elsewhere, want to do a mobile vendor unit somewhere else and maybe they're not as conscientious of sanitary connections and stuff and the issue that could be there as this vendor seems to be, then I wonder if anybody that comes along, we can, you know, we have to look at them and go, well, are you going to have a, you know, a proper black water tank and dispose of it or not? I think.
Well, the first question is, is your, is your unit certified to operate without a hookup?
Yes.
By the state department. And if it is, then are you going to operate in such a way? If not, we'll come after you.
Also, Eric, that's, that's the beauty, if I may, that's the beauty of the conditional use procedure. You don't have to worry about, oh, this is setting precedent for everybody in town. This is on a case-by-case basis and a conditional use decision is based on the unique circumstances applicable to the property and the proposal. So you don't feel like, you don't have to feel that this is tying the commission's hands in the, in the future.
Okay, understood. I do, I do believe that having, okay, as long as it gets properly disposed, that's my only concern.
I think if that's the language, properly disposed, and if they're not properly disposing, then we address that. Whether that be a hookup or a.
The only unfortunate part about that is it would take, you know, a violation or a spill or something for that to happen. That's gross. That's nasty. That sucks. A black water tank spilled, not fun.
Well, if you're following one of them, it's not fun either.
Yeah, I mean, you know, half the cities around here have sewage plants that spill over the ocean all the time anyway, so.
The hour of operation, that would be the only issue I have, you know, setting a timer on it. If, and we'd even put a condition in there, if sunset, sunrise is more than an hour after normal operation would start, then outdoor lighting might be needed and it's only for that period of time. And then we could look at what the outdoor lighting looks like, but it may not be necessary. It may be light enough that you could operate with interior lighting and not have exterior lighting.
It must be exterior lighting on the building, so.
Well, we do have.
Does it, does Walmart have some lighting?
That's why.
Just within their parking area again?
Yeah, they're pretty lit up over there.
Yeah, they're pretty lit up, I think.
Certainly not dark skies and lighting.
Well, Condition Eight does, yeah, Condition Eight does, does address that and, you know, the sunset, sunrise and everything. It does allow for, you know, if they do want to extend their hours of operation to, you know, accommodate sunsets or sunrises, then they, you know, get an exterior lighting funding.
We'll find out real soon if that's going to work.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty dark sometimes. I'm looking forward to getting up and going to work in the dark.
Yeah. So I have missed another, I can't help this. About like the safety issues because pulling and trailer in and out, you know, raises more opportunity for somebody to get hurt, like in the parking lot or, you know. And what would be some other possible safety issues? And maybe Walmart is going to be aware of that, maybe vendors could be aware, maybe the fire department, but I just wonder if there's any safety issues that we.
I can only imagine that Worldmark's and the businesses, you know, businesses insurance are going to, are going to have a lot to say about any safety liabilities.
I think the worst issue would be we review that over time.
And there's little doubt that there are camp trailers and RVs in and out of there on a regular basis, I would presume.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And they don't always stop either.
Okay, so when we, is anybody looking at the recommended conditions in the staff report, which are on, we start on page thirteen?
Well, the conditions are on fourteen or fifteen.
Sixteen, sixteen, sixteen.
Starting sixteen. Do we want to tweak any of those, like number eight for the sunrise sunset thing or number ten?
Well, let's just wait.
Yeah.
Well, we, we definitely need certification regarding number ten, but I think what I'm hearing, what I've heard tossed around and if you guys would take a straw poll and understand if there's consensus about this, it sounds like the thought, prevailing thought is to give them, give it a year with regard to connection and take another look in a year. Is that correct?
That was my proposal. I think Scott and Clint are, I, and I'm, I can get on board with them no problem on putting it up to the, I would like to review it after a year if they want to change anything. But, you know, if the, if the black water tank collection and dumping works out, great, but, you know, like, like the gentleman said, he's probably not going to be wanting to haul that thing around all over the place for indefinitely. So it might be a self-enforcing rule at that point.
If we want to have a review in a year, I'm okay with that as long as everything's fine and viable also.
Yeah.
Is this condition, is this the way he's written this condition? Is this implied that we would review it in a year?
Well, that's the way, it's not implied. It's stated plainly in condition number one. But it doesn't have to be there. If you don't, if you feel like this is okay to be a permanent conditional use approval, then that can change. But yeah, condition one says, planning commission will reevaluate the conditional use for adverse impacts at expiration of the initial one-year period. And by annually after that, that might be more oversight than the commission prefers.
I'm fine with, I'm fine with the one year after that. I mean, if it's, if it's established and running after a year, I don't see any reason to revisit it every other year after that. Unless they propose changing something and, and to Scott's statement, yeah, I agree. If they, if they come in and say everything's good, I'm good with that too. And I would, I would entertain that if, if it's allowed, that we just let the city planning staff, you know, make that call.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
So staff would review in a year? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and then that'd be the end of it?
You don't expect us to do it at work, do you?
I have no problem with that. But I do want to.
Very much.
I want to follow through and clarify regarding the sewer then.
Sorry, I have to read a minute for a second.
I don't want to be rattled what you're saying, but if, if it becomes a staff decision in a year, will you be aware of any complaints that were made to the city?
Well, of course, I hear about every complaint that comes into the city. Large or small, I get to hear about it.
Okay, okay.
So with regard to the sewer, then am I hearing that you just want to waive that requirement, period? Or because otherwise the planning commission would have to be reconsidering this at a later date and it sounds to me like what I'm hearing is just go with the applicant's proposal for periodic dumping and pumping.
Yeah, I, I think personally, I'm on board with where Scott and Clint were, were at. Chris and Ruth, how do you feel about? The, the idea is that, you know, after a year time, if they're, if they're, if they're successful and they want to, you know, stay there and keep doing business, they're, it's probably going to be in their own best interest to get a permanent, you know, sanitary hookup, in which case, I don't see any, I mean, you know, that'd be great. I don't see any reason that we need to approve something that we all think should be happening anyway.
Yeah, if any complaints, like you said, Ruth, can come to my, my attention regarding this and there's any reason for me in a year to think it needs to be kicked to the planning commission, I'll, I'll do that.
So we could have language in there that staff, after the one year, when, when they come to you, that there is a consideration regarding the dumping or what should happen after that and that the staff would make this the recommendation.
Yeah, we'll just keep it kind of like it is in terms of we'll just evaluate it for any adverse impacts. And staff, staff will determine whether to continue the approval at that point or defer the matter to the planning commission.
Okay, all right, yeah, that sounds great.
That sounds, if that sounds good, okay.
Are we more or less got consensus on, on that?
Yes.
Okay. Any further thoughts for deliberations or would anybody care to make a motion?
I need to approve the application as presented.
With the conditions?
As presented.
Okay, oh, as presented. Okay, I second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application as presented and as we've discussed, I presume. Any other, any further discussion? Hearing none. Carla, would you please take the roll?
Morland?
Yay, Chris.
Whitmire?
Yes.
Sherman?
Hi.
Lily?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Motion passes, okay. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Jerome. Congratulations.
We're just going to invite her so often.
Yeah, I'm coming for coffee.
Okay, that concludes our public hearing. I think Creed's got everything more or less squared away on the conditions that we landed on. So. Good, moving on then to unfinished business. You guys are welcome to stick around with this.
Just to be clear, we just need to make the license and we're good?
I believe, I believe, yeah, I think you'll just talk to them.
Creed will prepare the findings and then those will be signed and then there will be a fourteen day appeal period. Yeah. And then a license.
All right, kid. Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Good night.
Do we have any unfinished business? You're hoping to make it a year? No. Do we have any new business?
Is the light, is the lighting?
Oh, yeah.
Thing, is I confused about where we were with the lighting.
Right, and the trees.
So the trees you guys all got a copy of?
Yep.
Yes.
Do you have comments that you were going to send to Creed about those?
Oh.
Or, um, we didn't, he didn't, what the, I don't worry about it. You know, the lighting ordinance was something he didn't, he wasn't ready for that to be back on the agenda. The tree ordinance, it was my understanding that you guys would send comments to him and he would be making comments to Kim, since it's actually a city council ordinance that will get adopted. That was my understanding of what was going to happen.
I have reviewed it, but no, I did not make any comments on it yet, so.
We sent the comments to Creed. To Creed, yeah.
Okay, my bad. All that work in there.
Sorry, I was muted there for a moment and I had to step away. My suggestion is let me go through the tree ordinance first and then make any edits, subject to Kim's nod of approval and then we'll get it to you for comment and and then, yeah, as Carla said, that is going to be private, city council matter, but you guys are working on quality of life stuff, so you definitely want to take a pass at it.
Yeah, definitely. We appreciate it for sure.
And Creed, what's the status of the lighting one that we looked at last month? Where's that one sitting?
Basically, I need to make one tiny little amendment to it and then just get direction from Kim, whether it's ready to go to the council or not. Because my understanding is you guys have given it the thumbs up. So there's one tiny, one tiny deletion that needed to be made and I've got that in my notes and so I just need to check with Kim and see when she wants that on, on a council agenda.
So Creed, we have to go through the major fifty-six mail and send that out to all property owners if it's a text amendment before it goes to council.
Yeah, so, you know, maybe we'll want to hold on to it until we have more of a package, but I'm not sure. We'll strategize on, we'll strategize on that. Maybe we want to do the trees and the lighting at the same time. I don't know.
And DLCD has a thirty-day notification, I think.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay. I knew it's thirty-seven.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like trees and the trees one, Creed's going to tweak around on that a little bit more and then send it out and then the lighting, see where we're at.
Yeah, we'll probably be ready to look at it next month.
Okay. Keeping an eye out for those. All right, do we have any other business to deal with?
Was the lighting ordinance attached to the tree ordinance within the same email or, because I've seen.
No, it was sent out separately to the tree.
Yeah, we got a big, you, you missed the last one unfortunately. That was where we had a, we had a big discussion about the lighting, the lighting ordinance at the last meeting.
Yeah, I never received that one in writing. I thought there's a tree ordinance on here, but I don't know how long about the lighting.
I think the tree ordinance one.
The lighting would have been in the planning packet for that last meeting.
Yeah, that was in that, that was in the August, August meeting Dropbox.
So that gives me a little late access at the block, so.
Yeah.
The Dropbox link?
Yeah, the Dropbox link shows up on Monday. I'll worry about that.
They send it out before that. But, but we can send it to your personal, if you're going to be up.
I just sent it to the city one. I just didn't see this.
Oh, okay.
All right. Okay, we'll jump back on those at a future time. Any other, any other business?
I think the tree ordinance led me something, but we prefer trees to people. We're, we're on the apple talking.
It's going to be sensitive ratio, thank God. Y'all have to be funny, why can't we?
That were the cool kids.
Okay, moving on, I don't believe they have any public comments or nobody here from the public to comment. City council liaison report is next on the agenda. I haven't attended city council for a little while. Does anybody?
I didn't view it last week, but it is the week we need to afford that. Didn't talk about any planning commission issues.
That was the first. Okay, let's move on then to city planner and or administrator slash reporter reports. We do have Creed's report summary in the Dropbox. Everybody had a chance to review that?
Yes.
I thought I saw something in there I wanted to ask about.
What was that?
Oh, I already asked Carla. I was, I was going to ask about the issue of people staying in RVs and stuff parked on the highway and everything and how bad that's gotten, but it sounded like.
Yeah, it's all over town, really.
Yeah, it's, it's all over Lincoln County.
Yeah.
Okay.
I had, I had just a little question on number two, the riparian area development. I'm not quite sure, is, to Little Whale Cove, to Whale Cove, I'm not quite sure the diff, the distinction between the two. Just, I just don't know what that is.
If I could be able to help there. So Little Whale Cove is the, you know, the dating.
Right.
Thing down there. And then Big Whale Cove, I think, I'm not sure what the. And then Big Well Cove, I think, I'm not sure what the drainage improvements are, but I'm not, yeah, never mind, maybe I can't address that. What are you talking about?
Well, there, Little Well Cove is, what, thirty-some-year-old, uh, subdivision or more?
Forty-some.
And, uh, they're two distinct, they're two distinct developments abutting one another. Big Well Cove is on the actual Well Cove, and Little Well Cove, pretty well centered around the Little Well Cove.
So I guess Big Whi- Big Well Cove would pretty much be just like Oceana Street down there, more or less, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, like, so like if you were at the state park and you looked towards, in that.
Yeah, jam fouls.
There, you would see, you would see the houses that are, it's not really a development, it's just, it's always referred to as Big Well Cove.
Yeah.
Because the, the cove is called Big Well Cove.
Right, okay, yeah, that makes sense. So this is a sewer proper, project, sanitary sewer and drainage primarily. Um, so it's a public, in public facilities improvement.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a sanitary sewer land that ends in Little Well Cove at the south end, before you get to the edge of the hill.
Right.
On that there's a creek, and beyond the creek, I believe, part of that is a bird sanctuary.
Oh, the wildlife refuge, yeah.
Yeah, and then you get to Oceana. Um, I haven't seen any drawings or maps about any of this, where this all sits in terms of geography.
Yeah.
But the word I got is they want to extend the sewer line down to, uh, Oceana to capture them and pump them up. Are they?
You will be, you will be seeing it, it'll come to you in the form of a riparian area development permit, and it'll be a public hearing.
Cause we're gonna have to cross that creek and all sorts of good stuff.
But they've been working with a city engineer, cause it's the sanitary sewer.
Well, every time anybody breathes in that part of the neighborhood, the state has to get involved. No.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
E2 is involved, absolutely.
Mm-hmm, okay, so this is ongoing, number two. Um, and we'll learn more about it. And do we have any oversight? I mean, what is our oversight as a planning?
As I mentioned, it'll come before you as an application for development in the riparian area, and it'll be a public hearing.
Okay.
And you'll have a staff report.
All right.
Is that street not currently served by city sewer?
That's correct.
Hmm, I didn't know that.
There's.
They've all got septic or something.
They all got septic, yeah. There was at one point gonna be a subdivision there, and they were going to be extending it. The particular property owner that's extending it, that was a requirement that they had to, um, hook up to sanitary sewer, which will then require people within, as a two-hundred-and-fifty feet creek, hopefully to.
Yes, I believe it is, yeah.
Once it's made available, they gotta.
Yeah, once it's made available, yeah.
What's that gonna do to the, uh, pumping station down there? Is that gonna?
Little Well Cove one?
Yeah, is that gonna run to that one?
I think it is.
Insufficient, but it needs to be replaced anyway, that does. Does it need?
Uh, be a question, could be a question for the city engineer.
Okay.
Or Brady.
Could be a good opportunity for it.
Well, they, they've been looking at this for a while, so I'm pretty sure, uh, it's not gonna have any adverse impact in that regard.
All right, any other questions, uh, for, um, city planner? Um, number five, where is that located?
I'm sorry, I don't have in front of me, what's number five?
The permit for new multifamily residential development.
Alex Cam.
Alex Cam, yeah.
Alex Cam, just one moment, and I'll remind you myself, I should say, where that is.
There's no file number yet assigned that says, "A pre-development permit approved by city engineer."
Yeah, that's where that is. He's clearing trees right now, um, but this second, I'll give you a site. I, I don't, it doesn't have an address, but I can tell you what street it's on, at least.
Isn't it Hanesley?
That sounds, yes, it is. It is in Hanesley, and it's immediately north of the existing multifamily, uh, development there. And. Yeah, just, just a few lots south of, of Collins, fourth parcel south on Hanesley. It's a vacant lot with a lot of trees in it. Or it was, eh, before last week, probably.
Trees are going quickly.
Nah, get them, get them chopped before the new ordinance gets.
That's right.
They're doing it.
Any other questions for me about that, uh, planner's report?
I don't have any. Well, Ruth?
So the exception to the Senate bill, like section thirty-eight, how's that, what's your feelings on how that's going? Is it too, too early?
Um, you know, it's just difficult because we have, we're such a small jurisdiction, and we only have one developer from which we can solicit, uh, that input that says, yeah, the guys are, the city is great to work with, and it, and their system works well. But it's a really strong letter from Chris, from Silver Depot Bay and Well Watch. So I'm cautiously optimistic about it, and I think that we do meet the letter of, of the criteria. Um, and then I also intend to run a draft of it by the bigwigs at the state before we submit it officially, and I'll get some input on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, last call, one question for this, uh, city planner report.
Mine has a, on the planner report, but I was just looking, uh, for the upcoming agenda for the city council. It looks like potentially just the way that, um, documents have been thrown into that main folder, that the, um, tree ordinance is, will be on the agenda at their September sixteenth meeting.
Oh, first reading?
Hmm, so that means you won't have a meeting, oh, yeah, you will have a meeting prior to that, won't you? No, you won't.
No.
So you won't have an opportunity to, to chime in on that, apparently, before it goes to them, but that's not to say that it's gonna get, you know, adopted or in final form.
It can't be adopted next week. It's only for a reading.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're just gonna, they'll, they'll discuss it. Thanks for clarifying that, Carla.
Yeah, and like, it's not finalized, so it, it appears that way that it will be back there, yeah.
Yeah.
Good. We ready to move on? All right, next up is planning commission concerns. Does anybody, where's your soapbox?
So I have a question. And it may mean nothing, but I just wondered, like, sometimes, and I noticed this, and I've done this myself, like, when we're asking, this, the person's giving their input on a public hearing, and we're asking them questions, like, where's the line between deliber- deliberation and asking questions? Because sometimes when we talk to them, we give the impression that we are in favor of something or against something. And, and you don't have to answer the question because, but I just, kind of triggered me today, and I realized that I've done that, and I don't know if that's okay.
Well, I think a simple answer is, would it, when the public hearings open, it's a time for commissioners to ask questions that they have. It's not time to iterate any conclusions or preliminary conclusions that you might be forming in your mind, so the, the difference is the time to say what, say what you think is after the public hearings close and you're in deliberations. The time to ask the applicant and staff questions to help gather more information to formulate what you think is prior to the close of the public hearing.
Okay. I don't think we're totally aware of that, and I know I've been guilty of that, so I thank you.
Oh, yeah, I just did that tonight, like, three times.
Okay, that's a good, good question.
All right, anybody else? Chris, Scott, Clint?
Nope.
No concerns? Uh, no concerns with me either, just a real quick, I did get to shout out our, um, Depot Bay Energy Resilient, was it Energy Resilience, the energy? No, it is? Okay, I got the name wrong, but, uh, this past weekend, um, I was up in Seaside for the Oregon AFL-CIO convention, um, and they had, uh, let me be quick, they had some, uh, oh, what was it? Like a roundtable discussion on some report that Cornell University had recently, uh, published in for Oregon-specific climate jobs. Um, you know, jobs in the face of climate change, or, uh, whatever it was titled, I don't recall. Um, I got to participate in that discussion a little bit, um, as a delegate from IBW, and, uh, one of the discussion topics was what are, what are things that your community is doing for, um, not necessarily climate-related things specifically, but just energy independence and just kind of a bigger picture on, uh, on, you know, energy grid resilience and distributed generation of, of energy. And I did get to shout out our Depot Bay, um, the efforts that our Depot Bay Energy Committee's been making and the grant, grants, uh, they've been pursuing and achieving. So, um, I think that went over well, and there was a number of folks in the audience, especially from the, uh, public sector, that were, uh, pretty interested in that. I had some discussions with them and, uh, and, you know, gave them some, uh, told them to go check out the Depot Bay website and check out some of the meetings and stuff, so, um, we're just getting around, it's, uh, it's some good work.
Cool.
It was good. I'm not going to another one of those conversations again, though, it was a waste of time. Okay, last call for any concerns. Hearing none, that's it, meeting adjourned.
I was just sitting there thinking, what are they talking about, the generators? Also, a couple of how, how you're gonna take, I think, that means that it happened.
Let me, yep, let's do it.
Uh, the directors meeting yesterday, uh, she talked a little bit about it, I don't know, you approached her?
Uh, no, one of my, one of our team members did, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we talked to the directors about it. They're all forward and excited about it.
Since you don't own the generator.
What?
Since you don't own the generator, it's true.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.